Board to order, and first thing I will do is, do we need to accept Tyler as a, for tonight, a voting member? So, do we vote on that?
You can just appoint him.
Tyler, you are blessed as a voting member for the evening. Thank you for coming. So, we have a quorum. There are five folks here, and that's, we only need three. And so, the next step is amendments to the agenda, and I would like to make one, if we could. We have requests before us to table the application for Celebration Tree Farm. They've asked to go at the October meeting, and so, if we, we do two things. One, vote to continue it, and then also confirm what date do we want to do their site walk. And our intent was to do the site walk to the same time as the regular meeting. It's still late at 5:00 on the, I think that's the 5th of October, and so, that's a possibility. We could just go ahead and do the site walk at 5:00 PM on the 5th. Come on in.
The passcode.
Do you know which one you're going to?
I think it's town office. Hold on, let me see. No, sorry.
So, and then the, okay, so, do I have a motion to continue Celebration Tree Farm, item 5B, to the 5th of October meeting?
So moved.
Second?
I will not be here that day, so I feel like I should not vote.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Second? As we lost our other person. I will wait just for a second, but Juliet returns.
So, that's, that's our next, that's Wednesday?
That's our, that's our next regular meeting. Yeah, that's our, that's our next. And while we're talking about it, does 5:00 work for a site walk?
That's the B.
So, we do site walk, and then come right to the?
Come right here. So, it gets dark at 6:03 or 6:02 or something that day, so, move quickly.
So, you're proposing to October 5th?
October 5th is our next meeting, yeah.
I can do that.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second to post it. Continue the Celebration Tree Farm to October 5th? Do all in favor raise your right hand?
At 5:00 PM?
Well, the regular meeting, and then, do we vote on the site walk? Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Site walk, yeah. Nope, she's keeping me straight. So, yes, this will be the site walk at 5:00 PM. So, that is 4-0, one extension. And then, to have the, have them here in a public hearing if they're ready to go with all their paperwork in time to do the public hearing, as well as 6:30 or at our 6:30 meeting on the 5th.
Even if they weren't ready to go on that meeting, would still have a site walk. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think so. That would make sense. Well, yeah, because we're gonna have a meeting anyway. So, got a motion to continue to the 5th of October for their, their regular hearing and public hearing.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Juliet, seconded by Ron. All in favor, raise your right hand. Or zip, one extension. Acceptance of the minutes of the prior meetings. So, I think we have the minutes for our last meeting. If everybody's had a chance to read them, I will entertain a motion to accept them.
I'll move that we accept them as presented.
Seconded.
Seconded by Tyler. All in favor, right hand, left hand, whatever, raise a hand. 5-0 this time. And now, informational exchange on non-agenda items. Mr. Town Planner?
I've, everything's pretty much covered by the agenda, so I'm good.
Okay. I think everybody was at the town, I think I'd say has everybody's been at the town meeting and know that all four articles passed. I think there was maybe one or two negative votes on one or two of the items, so. Residents, any, these would be comments that you have on something other than what's on the agenda tonight.
That's fine.
Okay. Non-residents, I don't see any. So, continuing business. So, this, Tyler, would you, hey, Charlie?
Yes, sir.
I think we've reached you.
I heard continuing business.
Yep. Your partner can join you there if he wants.
We're getting proud of this table.
Okay. So, tonight, we, last meeting, we approved potential conditions of approval, and tonight we need, we need to make a decision on yes, no on this particular project, yes, no on any of the conditions of approval, and also, the petitioner requested a waiver on not putting the monuments in, the lot, corner monuments in until they survey and stake everything else, so that would require a waiver. So, Mr. Thabarge, if you'd like to bring us up to date?
Yes, and as indicating the agenda notes, I just kind of catalogued your actions on this application so far, with completion determined on July 13th. That gives you 60 days to make a decision, which is today. And then you did a public hearing on the 13th as well, and started the substantive review. You received written, since that meeting, you received written comments from the town engineer and the school superintendent, which were included in your packets, and based on the review of the application and the public process input, I did draft conditions of approval, and on August 3rd, you went down through each of those and determined whether they would indicate that the project meets the standards with those conditions. And I did incorporate into the draft that's in your packet, the changes that were made. I do have a couple of questions on a couple of them, just for clarification, which I'll get to in a minute. At the August 3rd meeting, the applicant indicated that they would be submitting a certified survey, which was one of the issues that was addressed by the conditions of approval. They have provided that survey the day that we posted the packet, and I sent it out and put it on the website as a supplement. The, if the board decides that they've met their standards for preliminary approval, and you grant the preliminary approval, I will then prepare findings of fact for the final approval of subdivision, based on the compliance with the standards, as well as what it will be added during that final stage process. So, to move this, you would make a motion to grant preliminary approval with the stated conditions of approval. If that motion fails, then you have two courses. One would be to review again the conditions of approval and make changes if you think that with the changes, they could meet the standards if they're falling short on any of them, and if you determine as a majority that it still can't, for whatever reason, on even one of the standards of the ordinance or requirements, then you would make a motion to deny the application, because you must make a decision tonight unless the applicant indicates a willingness to extend the process. So, I will just quickly summarize the survey documents that were sent out in that supplemental package. It included a letter from the surveyor addressing the points that were raised in the review by the planning board, as well as some of the public comments. In there, apparently, the fragments of fencing that are different than what is the measured boundary line. The total area amounts to 1145 square feet, and the surveyor indicated that if it ever went into a dispute, there'd probably be transfers on both sides, so it might even be a moot issue. However, that, that was the surveyor's assessment. As far as the Timber Oaks corner discrepancy, he calculated that it was one foot off from what is shown on the Timber Oaks plan, and does not consider that to affect the project in, in any way. There is an undefined CMP easement that apparently serves the utility service to the abutting lot that goes up that right-of-way or access, and that is now shown, indicated on the plan. They did provide a copy of that. So, on this issue of the survey accuracy, as I've indicated in past, you're not in court with jurisdiction to adjudicate boundary disputes, but you do have the responsibility and the authority to make a determination on whether they have met the submission requirements, number one. The registered survey was an issue for that. Number two, have they demonstrated sufficient right title or interest to the land that they are proposing for subdivision to, to indicate they have a right to be here requesting what they're requesting? And then finally, have they demonstrated that the open space, notwithstanding that discrepancy of 1145 feet, still meets the required 50% open space? So, if not, if, if on the waiver of the, of the putting in the pipes now, instead of when they do the individual lot monumentation, if you, if you decline that waiver, and the application, as I said, for waiver has the criteria in a draft motion, if that fails to be granted, then you could just keep condition number four, which says that when they come for final approval, those monuments have to be in before the rest of it's monumented. So, the two areas that I wanted to call to your attention on the draft, revised draft of the conditions of approval, is it wasn't clear to me on item 1B, this is on page 11 of the agenda packet, whether or not you agreed that if the app, it seemed to me that you were saying that if the applicant has the MDOT engineer specifically address the offset of Patriot Way with this new intersection, you'd be satisfied without getting the town's peer review engineer to, to weigh in on that. That's where I thought you came out. If that is the case, then you could drop 1B, and we would revise number nine, which addresses that same issue, to say, ask the applicant, ask the MDOT to address the offset, offset with Patriot Way. So, the applicant has to specifically point that out to MDOT and get MDOT to address it in their permit. That's what I understood you left it, but I just wanted to make sure.
That we would hear that before, at the final plan stage?
So, when they come back with their MDOT permit for the final plan stage, you would look to see if that's been addressed in the MDOT permit.
I think that's what we were saying. That's what I was thinking.
So, if that's the case, then you could drop 1B, but I just wanted to make sure. And then, the other one was the waiver, and as I just said, if you decide not to grant the waiver on the corner pins, then you would just let item four in, keep it in.
So...
Can I, sorry, you go.
So, I, I believe that we needed formal motion on eliminating 1B, and I will make that a motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second to eliminate 1B from possible conditions of approval. All in favor, raise a hand.
Yeah, a question on that.
Sure.
So, there's a chance that they'll, they'll flag that to DOT.
Yeah.
DOT might come back and say, no, we can't sign off on this.
Then they wouldn't issue the permit.
Yeah.
Okay.
And you'd have to modify your plan, your plans to do whatever the DOT says is correct. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, raise a hand. It goes as 5-0. So, 1B is eliminated as a possible future condition?
So, can we talk about the waiver real quick?
Sure.
I guess I just wonder, can we waive this item?
You're talking about the waiver for the monuments?
For the monuments, yeah. So, there's, you know, we talked about this before, there's the list of things that we can waive.
Yeah.
Right? And that is not, I don't think, part of that list.
But, we're not like waiving that they are gonna do it, we're just waiving the timeline, the timing of when they do it.
Yeah, yeah, and that could be our, our decision here. It's just, it's not too clear in our ordinance, you know, this is the list of waiting during the prelim plan phase, right? So, it's not in the prelim plan able-to-waive list.
Well, the survey itself is not waivable.
But, the topography is, the foot contours.
Yeah, but the question is whether or not the corner pins within that could be waived. I think you have authority to do that.
Okay, okay. That was just a que, I just wanted to, I am, I am okay with waiting as long as they're in for the final plan stage. I'm okay with that, I don't know.
Okay.
Well, the waiver is to say they don't have to do it until they pin the monuments after final plan.
Right. So, I am, I thought we were saying that we would have these in for the final plan stage.
Well, we...
Is that...
My, my recollection was that they, you know, they got, there's a lot of work that has to be done when they, you know, set up the lots and pin the lots and all of that, and my understanding, we were gonna allow them to put those monuments in when they do all that other work, instead of going out now and doing it.
What do normal subdivisions do? Is this done?
Well, the ordinance specifies that those corner pins should be in, and typically they are in when you're doing, you know, because the survey's already been done, just to show that they have full right title and interest, and that you could go out in the, on a site walk and determine where that corner is if it was a question.
And I think it could have leave the survey question that you also brought up a little bit.
Yeah. So, for example, if that had been put there, you could have gone out, you could have seen where Timber Oaks says it is and where they say it is, and that would have helped see it on the ground.
So, how come they haven't been done yet?
It's fine to ask the applicant questions, or any member of the public.
Yeah, let me, let's do them around here first, and then we'll get to...
So, what's the reasoning for, I mean, why didn't the surveyor put them in when they did the survey?
Or not put them in?
It's a good question. I believe that everything was pinned, so he was essentially just confirming the boundary, rather than going out and setting things. The two pins that are missing are the ones along the property that Johnny Snell now owns, who's part of the project, so, the lower one.
Okay. Kind of parallel to the right-of-way?
Yeah, the only two pins that are missing are, where are we here? This one and this one.
Okay.
Which adds a set measurement of 50-foot, but because these were owned by the same property owner, the surveyor just never put those two.
I see, yeah.
But the rest of the corners are all pinned.
Is it a big deal to put them in?
It was just timing factor, really. The locations are set in stone. The only reason it would ever change is if I disputed it. Obviously, I'm not gonna dispute it. You know what I mean?
So, is, are those the only two you're asking for a waiver for?
Yes, all the rest are pinned. And he labeled it right there, and, no, it's that one and that one.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's the back corners. It's the actual dividing, it's the dividing points.
Yeah, and he has it labeled in his key here.
Yeah.
Somewhere. The back dot with the circle means to be set.
So, this one?
Yeah.
This one and that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that one was in the middle of where, remember that foundation that they had to backfill and all that site work had been, that was right in the middle of that?
Because the previous landowner was thinking about changing the outlines, so the time is never set.
Anne, I think you had a question?
Uh, no, maybe.
Come back to her.
This is a song to watch.
That was a precious one.
I might have just confused myself before I ask a dumb question. I have to go look at it.
No dumb questions.
So, what would be, why wouldn't we acquire it? Like, if it's not, it's usually required, it's usually done, it's not that much work ahead of the final plan.
It is though. The only, the only reason I would say it's a lot of work is because getting a surveyor out there, that's a process, like...
Well, everyone has to do it.
No, I know, and they've done it once, and so, I know, and, 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 right, you guys have the total authority.
So, from the board, what is, like, what is our issue with getting that done ahead of the final plan?
Well, my take on it is that there's not, I mean, they, we don't really dispute where that line's gonna be.
It's true. I think the line is, well, pretend, right here, right?
That's not the line.
I know, I know.
Yeah, right.
What I'm saying is that is where the question really is. I hear you.
This is the question here.
Yeah, that's...
And we know that we're that...
How is that property gonna be transferred to, the big property, Dean?
Uh, to Jack.
Yeah.
And Jack is different than John?
Similar names.
Okay. But a different human?
Yeah, different humans, different entities.
Okay.
Who, who is the applicant for the subdivision?
Jack.
Which is Stonex?
Stonex's brother.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So, anyway, my, my thoughts are that we don't have a question where that is. It's kind of an internal line, if you will, because John has property on one side and subdivision's on the other, so, I don't see that there's really a need to have them make a surveyor go out, set those two pins now, when they need a surveyor to go out later and set all the pins of all the properties. So, I don't see why we wouldn't just let them wait and do it then. I mean, I don't really need to see that. I'm not gonna go look at them.
I don't, it's something about precedence for me with this. Like, it says it in here that it's, at least in the prelim stage, and we're not even allowing it for final plan stage, the, that they're marked by monuments. I just don't, I don't understand why we wouldn't hold them to that.
Well, I don't think there's, it's disputed that it's in there, and that's why we were voting on waiving it.
The whole, for the whole, the whole application?
No.
Till they're done, till they're building, is what they're...
Until they get their final approval.
Well, I, once they get their final approval, then they're gonna have a surveyor go out there, put all the pins in, like, because they can't do construction until that's done anyway.
Right. Okay.
Any other discussion? Do we need to change the waiver to reflect just those two? I mean, I don't think we do. Say, just those two, if the others are all in?
I think I said just the two in the waiver application, and I, I think I said that it was the two that were involved with the butter.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the waiver? Or any other discussion? I'm sorry.
Wait, what's, the waiver is to waive it completely, right? Not...
To waive those two pins specifically.
To waive the two pins, okay.
Until the final plan.
Until final.
Well, until, until it's, we've approved everything.
Which will be after the final plan approval.
Yeah.
Is there, okay, we, do we have a motion, or any other discussion first?
I think, like, I can totally see Juliet's point, that it is maybe a weird precedence, and I think I'd feel more uncomfortable if those two particular lines were more relevant to the actual building lots, but in this case, I'm feeling comfortable with it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Big motion, please?
That one pin's borderline in the river.
Make a motion that we waive setting of those two pins until after the final plan approval, and they set the other pins.
A second?
Second. Alan.
Alan, create for that second. So, we have a, a motion and a second to approve. Raise a hand, please. If you approve, raise your hand. It is 4-1. Okay, I think, are there any other discussions on any of the other conditions?
And we would amend number nine to have that specific statement about that the applicant is to seek input from MDOT on the offset of the intersection.
I quite truthfully read nine as okay as is, but...
Well, I think you wanted to make sure that the applicant gets that information from MDOT. If they understand that from the record, that's fine.
I read it as the applicant shall ask MDOT to address the safety of the intersection offset from Patriot Way.
Should I, should I... Did I add that in there?
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, oh, you know what I did, I saw, I handwrote it on here, adding that I had amended it in your back.
It's formally been presented once.
Where did you go?
So, you're, I thought I was missing something.
Too good. Too good, Julie.
Well, this is an important deal because of, you know, concerns about another subdivision, so I, I appreciate that. So, I don't know that we do need an amendment, okay. Are there any other comments, questions, concerns for the other?
What about the fire pond? Where do we land there?
I'm gonna make a big old fire pond for you.
That is addressed in...
We said we'd do the full 120,000 gallon.
Okay.
But we, all, when you, since you're talking about that, on sheet C101, note A, talks about all residential structures shall have sprinklers. So, when we were in this discussion, when we were talking about the fire pond, if it's the 120,000 gallons...
I'll scratch that.
Would it, it would potentially eliminate that requirement, but it's on, but it's on that plan.
Right, so when I swap the pond on there, I'll scratch the other one off for final there.
Okay, but I just, is everybody in agreement with that?
What is the, what is, what do we...
It was on, based on this...
Okay. Can I clarify? So, the applicant originally proposed to not have any onsite water, but going with what has been traditionally done on prior subdivisions of just having sprinklers in the individual homes. I pointed out that that isn't really what the ordinance calls for. It calls for a water source of a base of 36,000 gallons, which can be in cisterns, or in a fire pond, but if it's a fire pond, it has to have at least 120,000 gallons. And, you know, with the drought and everything else, that's part of the reason for the difference in the capacity. And the applicant initially said they were willing to put in a 36,000 gallon fire pond if they could forego putting in the sprinklers. So, finally, the final analysis was they indicated they're willing to put in a fire pond with 120,000 gallons as the only fire protection measure. So, the note, as you, as you, Alan correctly point out, still says on the plan, but the applicant tonight is saying that they will remove that note if you approve it with 120,000 gallons.
I guess the one concern I would have, in a situation like we've had this year, would we be able to, we have the resource that's gonna maintain that 120,000 gallons?
The fire chief has raised that concern, and one of the ways to address it is to make sure wherever they put that fire pond, there is an adequate groundwater supply to it so that it does not go dry, and that can be analyzed by a hydrologist, so that could be part of the peer review to make sure wherever they put it is wet enough. And there are some wetland areas there, obviously, that are indicative of, of, of wet hydro soils and high groundwater tables, so, that should be part of their analysis. And the fire chief has also provided me, and I can provide it with the applicants, of a design spit standards for fire ponds, so, all of the, the intake and outlet, there's specific specifications for getting the intake from the pipe up above the bottom so the sediment doesn't clog it. There's freeboard for ice forming on the top. They have to make sure that whatever piping they use will connect to the fire department, so all of that will be worked out in terms of the review process.
Do we want to add that, then, to the engineering, the peer review, or did we already?
Think it is. There's words in there, the effect of recommendation...
Review of the engineering designs for road construction, utilities, stormwater management, erosion, sedimentation controls, and the proposed fire pond.
Awesome, okay.
One quick question for clarification. When we had originally proposed sprinklers, part of the, the reasoning was because it didn't, it waived the requirement for a pond, but then you said that it doesn't, we can reduce it, but you can't reduce it down to zero.
That's right.
So, I guess where does that, where does, just so I have all the...
Do you still request and get the fire chief input on whether or not a reduced capacity of the pond with sprinklers might be a better solution for both sides?
Yeah, yeah, I just want to make sure that when we get back together and I...
Again, with a preliminary approval, you're basically saying if they put the 120,000 gallons in, they meet the standard of the ordinance. That doesn't prevent them from coming in, and at final approval, you making changes like that. So, I just wanted to clarify what a preliminary approval is and isn't. It doesn't lock in everything. You still have the authority to make changes when they come back to final approval. And we haven't gotten any indication yet where that is, or...
Cut the end of the hammerhead, the pond. I think I'd, I'd roughed it in the first time as a 36, and then I haven't changed, shown the bigger one.
And part of the engineering review will say that's the right place, because we're concerned about inside resource protection.
There's already gonna be a stormwater or something, right there.
Yeah, I have a level spreader right here, force and buffer.
So, you could modify that.
Yeah.
Have we gotten comments from the fire department yet, or no?
The fire chief?
Specifically on this?
Yeah, the fire chief just expressed concern with drought conditions, like Alan and Alan mentioned, for a fire pond.
He's been wonderfully responsive. He's, he and I have been back and forth a couple times.
So, make sure you've got the chief, you guys are in sync with the chief when you come back with final plan.
Yeah, he's great.
I think one of the reasons he expressed that concern was that there, in another subdivision around town, there is a dry hydrant on a dry pond.
Yeah.
So, like I say, it all depends on the source of that water.
Okay. Um, I've got a couple of things. Um, the, uh, the right-of-way, we talked about the road extending to the west, and I think we were gonna add in a condition. Did we, I'm, I'm sorry, I haven't looked through this. Is that in there?
There's one in there, I don't know if it covers what you're asking, Julie.
It's, um, it's gonna... 2A.
Two A. A right of way shall be extended from turn around to the, uh, we talked about how it is going to have to cross stream wetlands properly. Not sure if we need to put anything in there, but it's super, super wet. Remember talking about this?
There's a drainage that goes down through there that would have to be crossed.
I know, super, super wet, but it's.
At the time that whoever comes, whether it's the town or another developer, to extend that, they'd have to go through the permitting process, just like they are.
Okay, so there's no, no need to add anything additional, okay.
All they're doing is extending the right of way.
Okay.
I'm gonna send it just straight out the end there so there's no extra curves in it, and just gonna.
It's just a paper right of way.
Yeah.
And another question, the CMP corridor. Um, I saw it mentioned in the letter from the surveyor, but where is, did, did he put it on here? The.
The new note, I think. And was it serving your fault?
Can you show her where those poles are?
Right here?
Yeah, it's right there, there's the background line, there's a pole, and then that's a pole.
Okay. Okay.
And this one on my property has a meter.
Okay, so there's like about a fifty foot buffer, or right of way?
Uh, the letter was included in this.
Yeah.
It's not defined.
Yeah, it's just that they can get to it.
Okay, so that's where you guys are connecting to, right here, okay.
Right off the rest of.
Cool.
There's one item that I have concern on, and I don't think we've even talked about it. It is on pickup of solid waste, and whether this is the time to bring it up. If it isn't, then we will bring it up eventually, I will.
Mm-hmm.
Is, I've noticed on any subdivision, size wise, whether it be six houses or twelve houses, if we don't have a collection area, because all of those twelve houses are gonna be bringing their recyclables and waste to the curb. And being on a main thoroughfare here, there needs to be a pull off in an area to actually accommodate twelve houses.
I think we included in the HOA the same stipulations we did out on Bowie Hill, where they have to get a private in that personal, they won't have a, an on-road drop off on Hollowell Road, there won't be a, it's.
Yeah, my concern about that is, these people are all going to be taxpayers in town.
Mm-hmm.
And they already have, uh, solid waste pickup within their tax bill. And I don't think it is fair to being, charging them an additional cost to have a private entity going. And I don't think you would either. You would say, probably you would want a abatement probably on your taxes saying, okay, can you abate me for what's in my taxes because it's not being picked up by the town?
Sure.
You know, there's, there's a couple of different ways to address that. Now, I know it's, it's certainly a challenge to have a pull off right on the main drag.
Just with the fifty foot right of way. It's not like we have the.
Can the pull off be off that road? Instead of off of Route nine?
I don't think the private con- our con- the towns contractor is probably, if you're asking, will he turn into your street?
He has to turn in the backpack.
How does, uh, Timber Oaks and, and those guys do it right now?
Well, I know, I, I live right, I live on Day Road, and they're still working on, it's twelve house subdivision, uh, Truman Day Estates. And they've put six houses in, and they bring all of their recyclables and waste to the curb.
Yep.
But there's only six houses they're doing, and it's a lot, but Casella comes down, and they did, basically, it's a dead end road. For one thing, it's.
Yeah.
Easy for them.
Yep.
They basically pack in the middle of the road.
Right.
And then they back into the subdivision road.
So Cassell is your private contractor for the town?
For the town, yes.
So they do, they pull, I could do something off the side of the road there, on, like, essentially in between Johnny's driveway and theirs.
Is it possible to get, to get some, a little bit of property along the road? For, you know, out of what Johnny's property is?
I think he put a road in right there, his driveway comes in.
Oh, okay.
You just gotta realize, i- in doing something like that, you have to prepare for the winter, and you wanna have a stable base underneath it for plowing.
Sure, yeah, we had to pave an apron out there.
What I, my personal experience on seeing this on another subdivision is that you probably have to look at at least two large containers for each household.
Yeah.
So you're looking at twenty-four, potentially twenty-four containers that would be within that area.
Mm-hmm.
Just planning ahead is for size.
Yeah.
Maybe another option is, and I don't, I remember it came up on Bowie Hill, about having a private contractor, and the concern is, how does the town not get screwed later? Could we do the same thing we do with private roads and snow plowing, put it in the, uh, in the covenants, and we say something officially that the town will not pick up responsibility for trash collection?
I think that's what they did with Bowie Hill.
That's what we did with Bowie Hill.
But I see what, I agree with what Alan's saying, it kinda sucks for the people.
But I guess, I guess my question is, is on, on Route nine there, which is obviously, I think part of the problem is it's a busy, big road. Does Patriot Way and Timber Oak both, all, they all dropped their cans right off along the road there?
No, I think Patriot Way is a public, I mean, a town road.
It's a town, town road.
Thanks, you accepted that. Yeah, right, if you did it to the standards, you took it.
Used to be the. Yeah. Yeah.
Yep.
Timber Oaks probably the two.
But then, you, you, when we talked about an HOA, well, I was only looking at the waste disposal on that, but you also have to look, through an HOA for a private road, they realize right up front that they're gonna have to have the upfront cost of plowing during the winter.
Mm-hmm.
So how is that any different than solid waste, I guess?
That's my thought, is that you're on notice when you, whether anybody ever reads the HOA documents.
Well, yeah, right, yeah, right.
Well, by the way, you know, we would make a comment to the, if, uh, we could, and I don't know if, if it would work or not, but one, you're on notice because of HOA, and two, we put a statement in there that, like we do with public-private roads, town's not gonna pick it up unless.
They accept the road at some point.
The town meeting approves it or something like that, I.
Yeah, and again, if that right of way ever popped through and you guys did loop it and take it, then sure, that part of the HOA would become kinda.
I think you're better off putting in the covenants.
Yeah.
That the property owners will not place waste receptacles, blah, 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 blah.
That's what we landed on Bowie too, yeah.
Cause I don't think we can bind the town to pick up trash or not pick up trash anywhere.
Hmm.
Right?
I guess.
So I, and then it's a, it's an enforcement matter within the HOA, but I don't think we can put something in there that the town will or will not do anything.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay, so therefore you've already addressed it.
There you go.
Thanks for the discussion.
No, I.
You had it with yourself mostly.
That's right.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
Um, cause I would imagine buses and everything else, the kids are popping it out to the, to the end of the street.
Oh, yeah, they have street, exactly.
Um.
They can walk to school from there.
Yeah.
Which is what I told my kids when they wanted me to buy a new car.
You're gonna have thirteen cars at the end of the road.
Yeah, yeah, they got a nice queuing space though, cause there's not a house for.
Okay, uh, keeping in, good discussion. So are there any other discussions on, uh, anything else on the, uh, conditions of approval?
What about open space calculations? Did we get a firm number on that, um, based on your updated plan?
I haven't changed it based on the eleven, but I know we were, I'm pretty sure we were way good. I think we had eleven hundred square feet to spare.
Okay.
If that were to swing one way or another.
Okay.
And we'll look at that on the final plan if you tweak lot lines and other things, so.
Sure.
And then also, I'm wondering about these two lots here, six and seven. So there's a big wetland in between the buildable areas, right?
Mm-hmm.
So are we okay as a board, they're only gonna be able to build in this small area, right? They're not, no one's gonna build in here, same with, well, maybe, this one's a big one, right? So this area is, I, I don't know if you know what, how many.
Eighteen thousand at least.
Okay.
Which is a big area.
And condition of approval number twenty addresses that, which is, they have to have a detailed grading plan for building sites of lots six and seven, which becomes part of the final subdivision approval that can be amended, so they're gonna have to show the grading of those lots to make sure that it does not intrude on the wetlands. And that they, if they wanna do a different grading plan, they would just come back to the board and get approval of a, of a alternate.
Sure.
Okay.
And that's their submission of final plan?
Yep.
Is it, is that clear? That was my.
That's twenty.
Yes, twenty, but I mean.
They shall provide detailed grading plans for those building sites, which shall become part of the final subdivision approval conditions.
Okay.
If that covers it, I'm good?
Okay. And all of the lots meet number four under clustering, right? Net residential acreage, that calculation, including those two new ones, okay.
Says auto, Ken?
What?
It says auto, Ken.
Alright.
And you will once again have to certify that when you come back with your final plan, that if you tweak any of the lot lines or any of that stuff.
Yep.
Any other comments?
Wondering about the peer review, but don't know if we should talk about that after this, like the schedule of that, and we've gotten that kicked off, or?
It's pretty much ready to roll.
Ready to go, okay. When do we get that going? Right after we?
As soon as you get a preliminary approval.
Okay, alright.
I move that to, we accept the preliminary approval as we have amended tonight.
Seconded.
Okay, so now we're voting on the approval of the preliminary plan. Are there any comments before we raise our hands?
Hearing seen done, raise your hands, please.
Two, two approved. Uh, five, five zero approved. And I think we're done with Deer Creek?
For now.
Dear God.
For now.
Alright, good. Thank you, everybody, for your patience.
Appreciate you guys, you're awesome.
Thank you.
So we've moved from that to, or are moving from that to the plan, the outreach plan for our two parts of the, of the ordinance changes, the articles for the next town meeting, which are affordable housing and tweaks to the, uh, road, uh, ordinance, or parts of the road ordinance. So, George, I'll let you, you put a lot of, George and I appreciate you put a lot of work into, uh, thinking through this, as is everybody, so George, if you'll.
Yep, I'll just summarize the notes again. Uh, so on June eighth, at that workshop, you decided that you were gonna limit your focus on land use or amendments to those issues that you just mentioned, John. Uh, and, uh, since then, what's happened is the, or actually the, the state, just what precipitated that was this new law saying that every town must allow up to three lots on certain, uh, lots in every town, wherever you allow a single family.
Three units on every lot.
Three units, and then, uh, two units on vacant lots. So that has to be in place by next July. Um, so also at the same time, running on parallel tracks with this is the Conservation Commission review of the zoning map for the Resource Protection District, and then also the Historic District Commission is looking at the historic preservation, so we've talked about, all three groups really want to have a public outreach this fall so that you can take public input, get the discussion, get some input, uh, before the amendments are drafted and presented as warrants to the, to the, and public hearings are held in, in, uh, late winter. So, um, you also did indicate you wanna try to fix the backlot access and, uh, the private waste standards. Um, and on the affordable housing issue, MMA did supply towns with guidelines. They said in there that D E S, D A C F, uh, were going, and or in the municipal association, were gonna be providing guidance to towns by this summer. Didn't happen, uh, and not necessarily expecting it anytime soon, um.
So does that mean that the July timeframe may move to?
No, no, that's just the administrative, the law won't change. It'll just be that they won't be providing assistance to the towns like they indicated, within the timeframe that they indicated. I'm sure at some point MMA will be talking to, you know, there, I know the main association planners and other groups, uh, so they may provide some guidance. Everybody's trying to figure out what the law means and how to interpret it, so, uh.
What do you think on that, George? Are we, do we feel prepared to go forward with?
Well, we have to go forward because you have a town meeting in April.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you can't wait, you can't wait until, you know.
In the last July, right? Yeah.
Other towns have different, they have council, government forms, council, town councils, so they can do it at any time with a town meeting form. You're locked in, you can't wait, so. And again, if they, if it changes, by the time you get to the point of a public hearing in the spring, you can, you can consider that.
Okay.
Yeah, but as well as the public hearing input.
Yeah.
So, at the last meeting, I did present one option, uh, just an interpretation of the laws. Um, and you expressed some concern with that going farther than the law requires you to, so I went back and just rethought it and said, well, there are at least three different approaches to this. And so I drafted three different versions. One that I'm calling, which kinda lines up with, with what I gave you, which is, uh, what I'm calling, uh, implementation of the twenty eighteen comprehensive plan recommendations. And if you look in your packet on page, uh, uh, twenty-four of your packet, you'll see right from the comprehensive plan recommendations, which were adopted by the town unanimously at the twenty nineteen town meeting. Two point one says, with the elimination of the southwest bend growth district, which was the only place that multifamily was allowed, consider allowing three unit and four unit multifamily housing in addition to duplexes in the rural residential district with design standards to make them compatible with typical Durham housing. Example duplex with an accessory apartment or farmhouse fourplex. Two point two, explore options for allowing tiny homes as accessory dwelling units or starter homes. The state legislature has passed a law that says you must do that. And the town attorney has given the code officer, uh, direction that he should issue permits for either of those.
And that's already in effect, the tiny.
The law is in effect, yeah.
The fine is up to four hundred square feet?
Yep. And then thirdly, uh, three point one, amend the land use ordinance to allow duplexes on its standard two acre lot unless there is an objective basis for requiring a larger lot, such as requirements for onsite wastewater disposal or aquifer protection. So I think the comprehensive plan is pretty well in alignment with that new law. Uh, and so certainly, if you were to adopt amendments in option one, you'd be in, some could argue you're not in compliance because you're not giving as much flexibility on the types of units, but I'll, I'll explain that in a minute, but I think you'd be in full compliance, and it would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Now, notwithstanding that, there, there's a different approach, which is to say, look, we don't have to get into all of that, just put in what the, absolutely what the law is requiring. So all you would do in option two is take the language from the legislation and put it into the ordinance. And so we would basically allow, uh, up to three dwelling units on properties that currently have one or two, uh, and they could be in any combination of accessory or full units. Uh, it would limit vacant properties to a maximum of two, which again, could be in any combination, and, uh, the minimum lot size would stay at two acres for single family and, and the current two point five acres, which would allow a duplex or the three units. And that would simply add the language from the law, it would partially follow the recommendations of the comprehensive plan, but it would give different landowners different treatments. So if you had an existing house, you could get two more, if you got a vacant lot, you only get two. Uh, and then option three, there has been some concern expressed in workshops and stuff of you gotta limit growth in town more than you're doing. And so option three is what I'm calling the maximum restriction, and I did check with another planner that responded to the broadcast that I did. I was interpreting it, this, the new law to say, like, right now you require two acres for one house. If it's a duplex, you require two and a half acres. The new law says you can require increased lot sizes for more units as long as that increase is not larger than what you require for the single family. So theoretically, you could require two acres for a duplex and six acres. So you could require two acres for each unit, and some would interpret that if you did that, that would offset the increases that are being forced upon the town by this law. So you could do that. So my suggestion is, in terms of going forward with the public participation process, like we did with the comprehensive plan, cause there are gonna be certain people, groups in the community that are gonna say you should make housing more diverse. Uh, other people are gonna say you should, the priority should be limiting growth, and the comprehensive plan, you know, is clearly what is adopted, was been adopted. So if you went forward at this upcoming public input, you could ask people to give their input on all three options, or offer a fourth option, which might be a modification of one of these. So in, for instance, putting in those increased lot sizes on one or two. So I, I think it's important to go into the public participation process with options rather than saying, this is what we should do, what do you think?
So really, a big difference between these options, especially two and three, is the amount of acres needed, right? And so for two, you're saying two and a half acres for a duplex? And so for two, you're saying two and a half acres for a duplex. For three, it would be four acres, right? Two duplex, would that be?
No, actually option two, as currently drafted, and you could modify this. It would keep the same lot sizes that you have now, but it would allow the three units as specified by the law in any combination for a house, for one that's currently occupied, and two in any combination, but there wouldn't be any change in lot sizes.
But it would be-
It's just the minimum, you don't have to cha-, you don't have to change lot sizes, so that's the minimum change that you'd have to do to be in compliance with the law.
And then the option three though, for duplex?
Yeah, that, that one you would say, okay, we wanna offset the increases that the state is requiring so that we don't end up with as much housing in town for rural character or whatever reasons. So you would say, we're gonna change the current policy on a duplex from two point five acres up to four acres. And if they do a third unit, they're gonna need six acres. That would, that would dampen the impacts in terms of the total number of units.
Would option one, sorry, one more thing, would option one follow our comp plan?
Yes, option one is the comp plan.
If that is the comp plan, option two is more-
Moving in that direction, but not completely.
Right, and option three is definitely not within the comp plan.
Three is probably going in the opposite direction.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think, I like, I kinda like option one in the comp plan because I think it's kind of allowing, you know, more, the second and third, um, units, a more accessory units. So it seems to me it's more in line with the comp plan and what, it follows what the state's asking us or forcing us to do.
And that might be the one, that might be the one point that someone would take issue with in terms of it not being in compliance with the law. Because the law says you can do any combination. This says, and this would be most in keeping with the character of what you have now. It would be the least amount of change because right now you allow a single family with one accessory.
Yeah.
You allow, you allow, but apart from the lot sizes, just the physical structures. Right now you allow a single family with an accessory apartment, which can either be over a garage or attached to the house. This change would just say you can do two instead of one. So you could have it attached to your house and over the garage. Wouldn't have a lot of character change that, what, from what they do now. Uh, similarly, right now you could do a duplex. And under this proposal, option one, you would, you could only do another accessory apartment. You couldn't do a standalone separate, so duplex plus a single family on that same lot. You could do the duplex and you could have a garage with an apartment over it or in addition to one side of the duplex. So, but that would be limited in the, in the size to fifty percent of the main unit, one of the main units. So that would be most in keeping with the policies that you have. But again, someone who's really forcing, trying to force the issue could say, oh, no, no, no. You're gonna allow them to have a duplex on another unit and-
Someone could say-
Full size units.
This doesn't follow, uh, or more restrictive than what the laws-
But I think between technically the number of units, as well as the fact that it's inconsistent with your approved comprehensive plan, you'd have a pretty good case to try to defend it.
I wonder about the size of lots. I mean, that's quite a big change, right? We're saying two acres.
No, you're only changing it from two eight, two point five acres for a duplex down to two acres.
For three units.
Which is recommended, which is recommended in the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, that's, that's surprising. It is in there, I know.
What is the rational basis for saying, do you need two and a, do you need another half acre?
Yeah, no, you're right. I don't know, I just, um, I don't, I don't know.
And just good, not to stop discussion, but kind of our goal tonight is to say, are these options three, one, two, what, we won't change them tonight unless we see something really wrong. These are the options we would present to the town for that public comment. And then we just kinda need to talk about when, you know, if George's got an idea of when we would do that, uh, kinda deal. But if there's something grossly wrong, like one of these would be dead on arrival with the state or whatever. The expectation would be that in the public workshops in Oc-, in October workshop, in October, people would tweak the, uh, somebody may come in and say, I want ten acres per unit or something like that.
Yeah, maybe, we don't know, option four.
In parentheses, you say, on option two, you say, it's called the minimum compliance. Can you describe why you-
Well, all it would do is just take the, the language right from the law and put it into the ordinance. So it's the least amount of change or compliance action that you need to take. That's why I'm calling it, that may not be the best idea in terms of term-
Yeah, we probably should call it a different name for that, but-
It's probably a good idea, so.
Yeah, I like them. I think when we get to the workshop visuals will be really important, like showing what this would look like, what this would look like, and what this would look like.
And like the option three, I think-
So is that, is that a volun-, do I hear a volun-
Like option three with, it says max restriction, I think that's good because what you're saying is that's your interpretation of the maximum-
Maybe we could call it simple compliance.
Or minimum restriction.
Yeah, simple compli-, yeah.
Simple com-, simple compliance.
When we're saying, take the language directly out of the law and putting it in the comp plan.
No, putting it in the ordinance.
Putting in the ordinance. So that basically would open it up for interpretation in the future if as people's interpretation of this very wordy, complicated law changes. But we'd be in compliance, so.
Well, that's the point.
You would risk that someone could-
So what you would do theor-, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, you think you would risk someone could at some point say, okay, you really didn't follow the letter of the law.
Well, once they come out with more guidance, we might have to change this, right?
Or, or if they come out, like usually what happens with the stuff like with the DEP and other agencies and uh, the state, state housing, like some of this law relates to affordable housing projects. So if D E C D or D A C F, whoever they assign it to, comes out with guidelines, or DEP does guidelines for shoreline zoning. So if you put this into the law, into your local land use ordinance, and whatever guidelines that they promulgate, you would say, that's how we apply it. So you wouldn't have to necessarily change ordinance, although it's always good to have your ordinance spell it out rather than somebody has to go check some state agency guidelines.
That's what most of these ordinance changes have been, at least with like DEP and, you know, resource protection.
Yeah.
I like it, I think, I don't, I don't have any changes to any of these options.
Are we good with kinda using this as the basis for the October discussion then? These three, three options that George presented. Then the next question is, and I think we need a vote on that, then the, the next question would be, uh, our next meet, regular meeting is October fifth, but I think between sidewalk and celebration and whatever else may or may not come in between now and then, that would be kind of busy night, so.
What are we celebrating?
Do we have anything coming, sorry, do we have anything else on the horizon right now?
Okay, so on timing, this is an issue, and I did indicate in the agenda notes, it's kinda like two windows here.
That was a no.
Yeah, okay, sorry, I didn't, I just was-
Well, I can't say that because tomorrow, tomorrow a solar farm, which has been discussed in the past, could be submitted, so I can't really say. Somebody asked me today to predict the, the ta-, the vote on the change to the map at next town meeting, I said, what? Who do you think I am? So anyway, sorry.
You're a town predictor, right?
Two windows, actually I was pretty good in the comprehensive plan, right? Those, those recommendations is what came out in the law a couple of years later, that's pretty prophetic. Uh, okay, so two windows of time. Uh, the elect, gubernatorial election is like the first Tuesday in November. In the two or three weeks before that, those folks over there are gonna be going crazy. Because this is the first time that they've done it. And so they can't be bothered with any of this. Uh, so it's either early, like second week of October after, the week after your regular meeting to do your meeting. And then we get the other two public, uh, input meetings in as well, for the Conservation Commission and the Historic District Commission.
We, and we does not include this board, I mean, historical, yeah, but-
We, me.
That, that, that'll, that'll-
At that point, but later on the public hearings.
Then, then the other window, so it's either like the first or second week of October or the first, or the second week of November after the election, but you wanna get it before the holidays, before Thanksgiving.
I actually wonder if we could use the election to help us here. Um, I know that when we did the comp plan, we had people staged during the election. Or, um, you know, at tables and stuff, we had a lot of people coming by, and that was like more survey. But I wonder, probably not a workshop, I was just wondering, could we schedule a workshop and people are coming anyways, would they stop by?
But in any case, you could put up some displays.
Yeah, yeah.
And I also wanted to talk to you about the possibility of survey, uh, because I did talk to Devin tonight about, and we've been trying to get GP cog to do a mon-, survey monkey like we did for the comprehensive plan, they just, they're just not responding. But I talked to Devin tonight and they, I T can put up a survey monkey on the town website.
Oh, good.
And all we would have to do is provide them with the questions. We'd have to get approval to get these, uh, twenty-five dollars a month for a survey monkey to be able to do more than their minimum. Uh, and so I'll talk to Jerry about that, but, so theoretically you could have a display at the town, at the town, at the election, if they allow you to do that, I think they do, don't they?
Yeah, they did then, I mean, it was-
Yeah, so you could have informational handouts or, you know, sample, examples of the survey, you could do that, to try to ma-, to expand that outreach.
But we wanna have a formal, uh, workshop too, right? That's what, okay.
And I think probably two of three have to happen. The three being historical, conservation, those have to happen before the election, but certainly, I think yours is a good idea and say, here's the original input. Do any of you other voters wanna, wanna weigh in on it? And it's yet another opportunity to get before them so that they can't come into the town meeting and say, this is the first I've heard of it, so.
We could do it after too, but it would just bolster our, you know, our, whatever, not agenda. But you know, our, our goal here, if we go to the town meeting and say, you know, we met with people during the election, we had the workshop, we, you know, it doesn't really matter where those, like if the workshop is before the election or after, I don't think that really matters.
I'd, I agree.
Yeah.
So then the question is for ours, because historical and conservation have to figure out their timing, uh, and Georgia worked with them. Is, is that second week, the twelfth? And the old, the selectmen are Tuesday, somebody's Thursday, so the kind of the night where there are no other meetings is Wednesday, the twelfth. Is that a potential to have this workshop?
That's, uh, October?
October, yes, I'm sorry.
Oh, in terms of where to hold it, obviously this room isn't big enough. So I did check with Devin and the, uh, he can do a recording at the Eureka with later putting it on the website. He can do streaming and recording at the fire station. So those are the limitations of.
I'm more of a fan of the fire station, you know, can get, I'm not sure how big their space is. If they're talking about the bays, you have alarms going off and-
Yeah, it's a meeting room.
It's about at least twice the size of this.
Pretty good size.
Yeah, not quite as big as Eureka, but you can fit thirty, forty people in there.
Doug, I have no preference on whatever.
The thing I don't like about the Eureka Center is no internet, so it's hard.
Yeah, I was gonna say that too.
I lean towards the fire station.
Okay, George, if you would check, check to see if we can get it that night?
Yep.
All right, we're good on the twelfth, I guess that'd be the first question.
Yeah.
Uh, and our role there would, we certainly would participate along with everybody else, uh, on our thoughts on it. And then after that, we prepare something, and then I like the idea of using the election as a place to get in front of people as they're coming in out and, and voting. And then, uh-
So my thought on the survey would be to process the input that you get on October twelfth and use that to formulate and reformulate the questions that we might ask about these options and the affordable housing law. And then the other question is, do we combine on that survey or do we have separate ones for the resource protection and the historic district, or do we put them all, all in the survey?
I almost would say put them all together. I mean, I don't know if everyone's gonna open up three, you know, if they do one versus opening three or four.
And my only modification of that is day all three had to be ready when we, when we're ready to go. I mean, obviously two of them are gonna happen after us, more than likely.
Yeah.
But we're not gonna hold up waiting because somebody didn't have it till change the word.
Yeah, they could be added after, as separate.
But I, I agree with the-
Have one big one.
One big one, if, if we get everybody else to be ready to go, which hopefully they will be.
So what time do we wanna do it? Five thirty, six?
Uh, is five thirty too early? I mean, it'd probably be a six, six thirty, six thirty to eight thirty, six to eight. So that's a whatever finishes, what's up?
I like six to eight.
I, I will say my monthly statement, I am retired, it doesn't matter to me, so, but some of you are still working for a living.
Yeah, and everyone else too, right? We want people to come.
Yeah, five, five thirty may be tough.
So let's start at six.
Yeah, I wouldn't do it before six.
Six o'clock on Wednesday, the twelfth, I believe that's the date for us. And then just so that everybody's planning your twenty twenty-three, um, we don't have to be involved, although we'd probably be welcome to sit in on the public workshops for history and historical and conservation, but we do have to hold their public hearings come January, February. So we would need the plan to, you know, three nights of public hearings depending upon, uh, how busy we think we are.
Or given that, you know, you've had these workshops, you may just wanna have one big, one big public hearing on all the proposed-
I think we'd probably feel that out, that'd be nice if we feel it out, but we make sure that, uh-
Yeah, but I mean, if you've got a hundred people at each of these all clamoring for different things, then you may probably wanna break it up.
Yeah, we could, we could do that. The other thing we still, if that's it on, um, affordable housing, we still need to talk about roads. Probably later on the, the backlot stuff, George, just kinda give us-
So the, the, a couple of changes we've made, uh, one is, is in response to this, uh, uh, affordable housing law because the amendments we did last ti-, last round for the backlots limited to one single family. And so I've struck that language out, this is on, um, let's see, page?
Thirty-two.
Yep, thirty-two, so you see, it struck out single, or one single family, so it says single backlot. Other than that, this is the same language as we talked about before. Still pulls out this parts for the multi-road, uh, which was, it mixed both together before and was very confusing. So that pulls the private way stuff out of there and puts it into five point twenty-three, which is the next article. And this again, you had decided back last winter that you didn't wanna just approve maintenance agreements for private ways. And if you didn't have the same discretionary authority that you had over subdivisions, you didn't wanna bring people in to no good purpose. So you said, let's just have the staff approve this, these private roads, like they're doing now. So that's, that's what we'll be putting up again. Other than that, it's pretty much the same.
What was the thing, and I just remembered that-
At the town meeting, why this fell off the rails was that, uh, one of the select board members pointed out that the draft originally had, uh, the same standards as subdivisions, which required paving after the third lot. And, uh, so they requested that we put it to gravel like it is now. And that went to town meeting, and then some people objected to allowing the gravel and not requiring it to be paved, and there was a debate. And so that kinda just, the, the controversy over whether these roads should be paved or not, just kinda, and the other confusion was, was this saying that the town would take over roads? So I did, and Kevin, the select board chair, asked specifically that we add language in here to clarify that issue of public acceptance. So, uh, that is now in here somewhere.
Requires a town meeting vote.
Yeah, C, C one on the bottom of page thirty-four of the packet. I added the statement, acceptance of any road for public maintenance requires a vote at town meeting.
So on the backlot stuff, we, you can only do one, you only have one backlot?
One lot on a sixteen foot driveway.
But with the new changes?
You could have-
Three units.
If, if you go with option one for the affordable housing, if you go with options two or three, you'd only have a duplex.
Okay, yeah, so that kind of, so, so actually, how are we gonna do that? We, do we have to wait for one for the other? Like-
Well, if you allow a single backlot on a sixteen-foot driveway, they could have three units back on that one lot.
Oh, right, okay, so it doesn't matter.
Which could be a duplex with an accessory or a single family with two accessories.
And you can't, you can do like a three-lot subdivision, pretty simply, right?
Well, if you get into sub, legal subdivision, you can do a three-lot private way pretty simply. Cause you just go to the town engineer or road commissioner and the code officer, meet the standards. And do the maintenance agreement and that's all you need. If you, if you create a legal subdivision, then the road, the road has to meet the requirements, you gotta go through the whole process that Deere Creek just went through.
So the big difference between that, that and the backlot is that the road requirements are not as strict.
That's it.
Yeah.
But are we now, I hadn't thought about this before, but as I look at my property, I could put three houses. On the, the front lot, I can have a backlot, I put another three houses back there. Units, whatever you wanna call.
Three units, which, which again, without option one.
Yep, but that's all of a sudden, that's six living something's on a dirt road, that.
Well, you couldn't, you couldn't do all six on the backlot access, which is only sixteen feet. You'd have to build, you'd have, if you're gonna have all six using the road, the access, then you'd have to have the twenty-foot road.
So you would have, where does it say that, I guess, because?
It's only, the backlot language just says you can only have one.
One single lot.
The backlot is accessible by a legal, forcible right-of-way. It may be used to create required road frontage for one single backlot if the following conditions are met.
And I guess my question, maybe I started with the question, does a backlot by the state law, must it allow multiple units on it? Because it is a lot.
Yeah, cause if you allow a single family on it under the new law, you better allow, uh, if it's vacant, you better allow two. Also, that's all you could have, you could only have two on that if it's vacant.
Well, not if somebody built something and, and then.
Well, the, this would add in there the language, which was as of July first, twenty twenty-three, I think.
Okay, yeah.
That's option two, right? Or option, no, option one would allow three.
Yeah, I think it would.
Option one would allow three.
Yeah.
Which is again, the argument, the only, the only question on that would be, should they have to have a wider driveway for the three than for the one?
Yeah, but again, I, I think that my thought, and we can talk, talk about this.
So the solution to that would be to say, if it's serving one unit, sixteen, if it's serving two or three, twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that would be my, we, and then we could have that same discussion about, does it get paved, you know, when the October meeting? To have a discussion about what else is gonna, does it have to have?
You think with an accessory dwelling unit and a single family and an accessory dwelling unit, you still need to go from sixteen foot width to twenty?
No.
Well, so there's potentially three families or three?
No. Uh, excuse, single family and an accessory.
Oh, so two?
How do we define accessory?
Accessory can only be no larger than fifty percent of the main do- main single family unit.
So it's much more.
The unit has to be at least fifteen hundred square feet and the accessory can be no more than that, no more than fifty percent of that.
So it could be a couple bedroom, you know, depending on the size of the existing.
Yeah, two bedroom.
I mean, I think that, it was just, well, unintended consequences, we just need to, we're gonna, we're gonna go back there and we're suddenly gonna have a backlot that has three. Potentially three.
I wonder, sorry. I wonder if we should, just because it does sound like what we determined for the affordable housing might have a play in these roads. Right, like sixteen-foot, twenty-foot, how many lots or units are back there? I wonder if we should just hold off on the road thing until. Is it that big of a huge concern? I mean, what the select board or the town is making those decisions now, right? For the most part?
The, well, what's happening is they're having to build a twenty-foot road and what a lot of them do is say, look, we're gonna build a twenty-foot road, we need more lots. So they go with the private roads instead of the single backlot.
I don't know.
There'd be nothing wrong with us saying that if you build a bad, backlot, you put your one child back there and there's one unit, it's sixteen. But if you now, a then statement, but if it increases to more than one unit, you must widen the road, and I don't.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking that that's a kicker.
Let me, let me draft an, uh, an, another alternative to five point seven. That would add widening for more than one, one unit.
Yeah, so the, the right-of-ways has to be established at fifty feet, right from the get-go.
Right.
So it'd just be a matter of, for, for a single, one single unit, you'd get sixteen.
Uh, you think accessory should trip it or just a full duplex?
I would say a full duplex.
I know.
More than one unit, uh, I don't know, an apartment, you, you know, you can put.
Yeah, I don't know.
Two or three people, you know, two or three cars rather, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
And a couple of snowmobiles and, you know, a couple of boats and.
Well, and human lives for the fire department to get to. It's emergency, right? Right.
Yeah, I mean, I.
So I would say two or more, maybe.
Now, was back, this kind of backlot language we have, is that, you, have you seen that fairly commonly in main zoning ordinances?
Yeah, some towns do that, but other towns just do the private way standards. So if you're doing any backlot, you have to have a private way, which is following this language in there for private ways.
Could you just get rid of backlots?
That's what I, where I was going with it.
Would never fly, ever. So can we go?
That, that I could see as a tough sell. I, believe me, I'm not, I'm, I'm not planning to have my family live anywhere near me.
Well, I guess like, the question is.
Hey, don't stress that.
If that would never fly, would adding in like limits on? This is only good for an ex, you know, single family, no accessory dwelling.
You can't do that in the new law.
Would people kick that out?
Yeah, I mean, I, we call it a backlot, but it's legally allowed.
You're talking about the road width.
I'm talking about the backlot road width.
Any, any lot where you allow a single family, you gotta do this, the new law.
Okay.
So who's talking about the road width?
Yeah, road width you can, yeah, oh yeah, road, road width you can, lot size you can.
Yeah.
You can increase the lot size. It just says, if you allow a single family home on that lot, you gotta allow two if it's vacant.
I think we just had, un- maybe unintended consequence, make sure we don't have something that we regret later where it's. Cause Anne is right, I mean, it's sixteen's not real big when you're cutting through the woods, cause then it becomes twelve and.
And, well, the fire department's gonna have to approve this.
Yeah, I.
And, and typically, they're gonna require a twenty-foot clearing going up through there. And they're gonna require like a certain height of clearing over the road.
And we have verbiage that says the fire chief has to approve it, right?
Yes, that's right.
Are we thinking of a workshop for this too, or are we thinking?
Yes, this would be, you know, it's a part of our workshop.
Did you list out options or no? No, no, not for this one, right?
No.
So the intent of it right now, even if you're doing just a backlot, you have to put in a twenty-foot wide drive.
Right.
And so we're trying to make it so you can have a backlot with only sixteen-foot wide drive.
Unless you have more than one unit.
Yeah, well, 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 that.
It doesn't say anything about that, right?
I know, right.
But what I'm saying is that I think now would be the time to add that stuff in. Cause, you know, if people really wanna get, have a backlot with only sixteen feet. Um, you know, they, that's what they're gonna be voting on. And if they don't wanna accept the, you know, some of this other language, then it's gonna stay at twenty feet anyway.
Can we go back to the gravel, uh, and paved, so what's, what is, what is the law now? What's our standard now?
The standard now is that if it's a, uh, a multi-lot, backlot access under five point seven. They can do it with a gravel road.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Talks about how many inches of stuff, or do we just leave it at twenty feet? I mean, what's the pressure to change it to sixteen?
It's just if somebody's building one house back there and you're talking, they gotta go back in five, six hundred feet.
Yeah, I would.
Twenty-foot road, six hundred feet long, you're talking sixty, seventy thousand dollars just for the road.
I would go with this, but add in some of the.
Incremental cost for sixteen versus twenty?
Well, it's quite, I mean, that's like a twenty-five percent, well, it's like fifty percent more.
Well, it's, it's not linear though.
Cause twelve, yeah, it's a third more.
Sixteen versus twenty.
Yeah, like you've, a third of twelve is four.
Where's twelve come from?
Why are we talking about twelve?
Twelve, right, oh, sixteen to twenty, yeah, so it's about a quarter more.
Twenty-five percent, so if it's a sixty thousand dollar roadway, you're talking about. Seven is dedicated to this extra four feet.
Yeah, but, I mean, you might be talking about more than to build the road, depending on how far you're going.
Yeah.
I mean, I think this could be an option, right? We're gonna have options at the workshop, right? Not do anything.
Well, and the thing is, if it doesn't, doesn't get voted, it's gonna stay at twenty anyway.
Yep.
Right, which it did last year.
Right.
We just under, I'm sorry.
I mean, is this something we?
I mean, we're, we were asked to, we were asked to address this. You know, people that, you know, specifically asked, when we had that workshop.
Yeah, here's what happens, everybody that comes in for a backlot and the code officer tells them, they're gonna build a twenty-foot road, they say, say what?
Yeah.
Every single one says, this is crazy.
Yeah.
Why do I have to build a road to my house?
If they're really just building the, the one single family house, no accessory dwelling, it is kinda.
Except to Anne's point about, you gotta get.
Ready to get sixteen.
It's a safety first.
Yeah, but it's, like, you got a long driveway, you don't have to build it twenty feet wide.
Doesn't necessarily need to be sixteen, it only needs to be sixteen because we're trying to help the fire department.
Like, people have.
Most people put in twelve-foot driveways.
People have really big lots that have driveways longer than a backlot dr- uh, road. They're not gonna put in a twenty-foot wide driveway.
Or a sixteen.
Or even a sixteen.
In my mind, a different.
They have enough road frontage and they're only putting one house back there.
Not enough road, I mean, if the driveway's that long, who cares how much road frontage you got? You're not gonna get a fire truck down there if it's not wide enough.
My argument is you put a different fa- potentially different family stuff like that, but these are good arguments to have on the twelfth of October. And so, and I think we, we do wanna have something that's not dead on arrival. Mike, if you don't mind writing up a little, if it's more than one, you gotta have twenty.
Yep.
Uh, and people could blow that out of the water and say, you know, sixteen and, and as long as the snowmobile can get back there, we're good. With fire equipment.
I think what's changed is the new state law.
What's that?
I think what's changed is the new state law. That's what's changed.
Well, that's why I think you, we kinda go with what we got here, but add in that it's for a single unit.
Add, if it goes more on that, cause I could see people wanting to do that, I could see people wanting to put a duplex back there or, you know. I mean, not everybody sells it to their kid, I mean, a lot of people.
Maybe, maybe we're okay with that if we do keep it to single. Because if we just kept that language in there, we could s- I'm just trying to think through. Be able to say to them, oh, you can do more units, you just have to do a private way for access.
Yeah.
I'm a little bit concerned, that statute's really terribly written. But it talks about not having different dimensional standards or setbacks. I mean, I think setbacks are easy, but I have no idea what the hell.
Dimensional standards.
Dimensional standards is, is it, is it dwelling size, right? Cause right now ADUs have to be fifty percent, can we no longer enforce that?
They did make some.
Driveway, is it?
They had some, uh, specific legislation on the ADUs too. You know, if I put that in here. Uh, yeah, so there's also some amendments that I had at the last time we did this on the accessory dwelling units. That, that the law, the state law, I do think you can have size differences. You can't have setback differences, but I think you can have side, size differences of units.
Well, as we're going through this, is it possible to go to, is there somebody at the state that would review this and say, yes? Is there somebody at MMA that would?
Well, I've already asked them and they said, we don't know any more than you do.
Well, but by the time we get to drafting something up, we're talking.
Yeah, they're saying they're hoping that DECD or DACF will provide some guidelines at some point.
I mean, I, I guess unless we feel that this backlot issue is really pressing. Which the voters did not feel it was pressing enough to change last year.
Well, they, I think they probably just didn't like what the su- the select board person brought up and.
But I think where there's enough upheaval and uncertainty in the effect of the new law. I would rather not touch this if there's not a crisis. I wouldn't think there's a crisis.
Well, there was a work, a workshop and I thought we, at that workshop, we were specifically asked to put this back on the, or the s- or. The select board asked us to.
During our little thing. Said, look, let's, let's.
The only thing the select board is, is one of the selectmen said, I would really like to have a statement that says only the town meeting can approve. That's only, you know, that's come from the selectman that I know of is, is he, he just wants to make sure that. It is clear that the selectmen have no power to accept.
Vote.
Public, uh, privacy, private to public.
It is already in state law, so we don't need to be superfluous, like there's no emergency to be superfluous.
If that's the state law, um, then we don't, yeah.
But also, things have changed since our strategy meeting, right? Things have changed at the state level since our strategy meeting. And so that, I would rather not touch this and avoid unintended consequences until we have a better handle. On A, what direction we're going with this affordable housing and B, what the hell it all means.
I agree with that, but I, for some reason, I felt that this was something we were really, someone had asked us to deal with. Get back on the, like it was.
Before.
I think it was a hot issue last time, I don't think it was voted down because it wasn't a hot issue. I think it was voted down because they didn't like how it was written, but I feel like people really want to get this through.
At the public hea- uh, public hearing you did.
Yeah.
There were a lot of people, mostly on the zoning map, but the ones that came also were really talking about the need to make allowances for backlots. Access for families, there was a lot of comment on that.
Oh, there was also comment the other way about the safety of roads and what happens when you have, right? It was really divided on this issue, it wasn't unanimous that I want my family.
I think that's one of those where I had to go count hands.
Right, and I think you would have wound up at about fifty, fifty.
Yeah, it was pretty close.
So, right, and some of them had been applicants here who did not like the process. And others understood the bigger impact of changing this, so. I'm not convinced there is a huge public outcry for this. And given the uncertainty that the new state law adds, I would not want to move forward with this one this year, but that's me.
Well, do, do you think that if we put in that it's for just one unit, that takes that uncertainty away?
No.
Why not?
I don't, because you can't allow, wherever you allow one unit, you have to allow at least two and maybe three.
We would allow it more than one unit, but you have to go up in road size then. But we can say that the sixteen-foot wide way is only for one unit.
I don't think the law is clear enough that I would be comfortable taking that chance. I don't know what dimensional standards means in that context.
What you're saying is they may say that the state says you can't increase it to twenty, cause that's a dimensional change and.
Yeah.
So you can't put an extra restriction on, just because you have a second dwelling unit or a third dwelling unit. That would be a dimensional change.
And I have no idea if that's the, going to be the interpretation or not.
Yeah, alright.
It may not be, but. I don't think it's urgent enough for us to roll the dice on that one.
Other thoughts?
I, that's where I was going at the beginning, hold off.
You wanna put it out, at least the informational meeting to get public input on that?
I think it, it'll start a lot of conversation, um. I don't know, I think we should make a decision, maybe not tonight, but whether we wanna go forward with it or not.
Here's something that I'm just thinking out loud here, is I usually go after this meeting into the selectman meeting. And I can say, however you want me to say it, but I can say that we were gonna take on more of the backlot road issue. Except because of a concern with, you know, where the state law is. Because of, I mean, we probably ought to eliminate the term backlot and just call it second law, whatever you wanna call it. Because I think, you know, the assumption if it's a backlot, it's, it's different. But, and I can raise that and if the selectmen say, no, we wanna, want you to take that on, we do it. Or I could just say, we're gonna take it on unsure of what the law really means.
Okay, so if you go that way.
Well, I don't know, is it their decision? No.
Well, ultimately, it'll be their decision what to put on the, on the warrants.
But is it their decision to say to us, go for it or not go for it, like?
My thought is.
Like, I, I like your thought, but like.
Dead on arrival if it's something they don't really wanna do, I mean.
It'd be good to get their opinion, I think.
Yeah, I think that's all.
Like, if it, if it's a really hot item for them, then that makes our decision.
It's gonna be a hot item for.
At least, at least on clarifying whether the town accepts roads or not. That, that they've said we want.
Well, that, that's a, that is, I think, the minimal thing we have to do.
So if you go forward with dropping affordable, uh, the uh backlot access for this year, as Anne has recommended, then I would at least move the multiple backlot language out of five point seven over to five point twenty-three for private ways and include in that, cause all that does is that sorts out the mess of road commissioner does this, code officer does this, what does the planning board do? It would sort out that mess. Plus, it would add that language in there that, look, you, the town doesn't accept roads except at town meeting.
And that's what they said they wanted.
Yeah, and I.
Right?
That's what the select board said they wanted, right?
The issue of backlot access
Yeah.
down the road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm okay with, I'll take whatever it says.
Tell the, the select board that's what you're doing.
Does that have to get voted on?
What does, what have to get voted on?
That move of the ordinance.
What you're suggesting.
Oh, yeah, yeah, to, to clear out that. No changes can happen.
Any ordinance change.
I, I get the impression of a little, I'm not in their hip pocket or their best friend, but I think anything that'd avoid controversy at a town meeting, they're perfectly happy to, uh, not take on.
It's just hard to get a yes, yes vote on anything, no matter what it is, so.
The, I, I think if the clarification is a, where.
I'm happy to have that discussion with them. They're not shy, they'll tell me.
Yeah, I'm making a note, punt on sixteen-foot backlot access, go with the private way.
Punt.
Private way.
Football season.
It will come back.
No, oh, no, it will, yeah. It, I'm sorry, I wasn't making a.
But I, I like Anne, or the justification is that we don't know, you know, what, what's gonna be required for this
Yep.
uh, with this new law and so, so.
Per the uncertainty over the impacts of the new law. Good.
With that, is there any other comments on this or anything else? So, October twelfth, uh, we will meet again with the general public at the fire station if we can get it.
I'll check it.
And at six PM and then, um, our next meeting is five PM at Celebration and Georgia will let the, the tree farm folks know.
Yep.
And lock that out and then come in and hear what they've got with a public hearing if, if you're comfortable that they've got everything we need. And write all that stuff up. And so I appreciate, so I will take, uh.
Can I just, um, one very minor thing?
Yes.
Can we have on the agenda, just specifically noted, whether public comment will be taken or will not be taken on each item?
On each item as opposed to the statement that's at the top?
I think, yes, so I think.
Did you see what's on the agenda now?
Yeah.
It says, no public comment will be taken on in, on individual applications at the meeting unless the board schedules a formal public hearing with required notice posted. Comments on applications can be submitted and written to the town planner or be forwarded to the planning board and the applicants. So it's on the agenda at the beginning. We could repeat it on every individual item, say, no comment taken.
May not hurt, we're, cause when we do have a.
Which way?
I think the way it, it is right now, as long as people are reading it, it's fine.
I, but I think the difference is, that doesn't tell me, has there been a public hearing scheduled on X item, right? So I think it would be really helpful to say, so substantive review, right? So informational exchange, that's not right, right? I guess it's not an individual application.
Yeah.
But we've got two items here. Actually, I mean, even on the other business, we've got three items.
And last time on Deer Creek, or excuse me, Celebrate, no, Deer Creek, that's right, we did say public hearing on this.
Yeah, I think that people get confused.
So you're saying like, Ian, like on five A, at the end of it, you put in parentheses, no public comment.
So if, if you go in that direction, what I'd do is just scrub the note at the top. And I would put on each one, no comment taken, comment, public comment taken.
Yeah.
We advertise a public hearing, comment take, public comment taken. Every other one, we put no public comment taken.
Yeah, and then if Deer Creek has public and the other one doesn't, people come for Celebrate. Next time people come for Celebration, they'll know it's gonna be public hearing.
Yeah.
They show up for whatever else we're talking about at that time.
I think that would make it really, like, if someone's gonna think about coming to this meeting, look through the agenda, they're like, oh, there's really no reason for me to go tonight, or, or there's public comment taken on this one, I really wanna get to that one.
It's a good idea.
So you'd rather do it that way?
Individually, yeah.
Individually. All right.
Okay, that, any other comments, minor or otherwise? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
A second is, is it a second? Okay, we have a motion in a second and raise your hand, please. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you for hosting.
You're welcome.
And I will get, after I talk to the, whatever's on Tuesday, I'll get back to you. And so I think what I'm, okay, the meeting's over.